All right. I'd like to call this meeting in order, ask everybody to rise for the pledge. And Mr. Bateson, if you would please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item up, item three is to consider and act upon the minutes from regular meeting February 15, 2017. May I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
A second?
Second.
Any edits, adjustments, or comments?
I'm okay.
Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, we have two resignations. From the Affordable Housing Commission, Jill Rosencic, Democrat from six Brooklong Parkway, her term was 1115 to 1119, and her resignation date was March 1, 2017. And from the Parking Authority, Lynn Farrell, unaffiliated, 801 South Pine Creek Road, for a term of 1115 to 1120, and her resignation date was February 22, 2017. Next up, appointments. To here consider and act upon the following appointment, the Police and Fire Commission, this is postponed from February 15, Paul Hiller, Republican, 2745 Burr Street, for a term of 1116 to 1120. This is to fulfill a vacancy for James Tecami. And I believe we plan on postponing that because Mr. Hiller couldn't make it today.
Yes.
So let's start with a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion.
And a second?
Second.
And I'm going to suggest, since just postponing to the next meeting, I think, Mr. Timmyak, you said you had a problem with schedule for next meeting?
It's possible, yes. It's highly likely, so.
All right, then what I'd suggest is we take no action on this. That lets us put it on the next agenda whenever that is.
Sure.
And I think the key things are making sure, Mr. Tamack, one, you can make it, but also making sure we coordinate with Mr. Hiller to see if he can make it. Is that a fair approach?
Yes.
All right. And then somewhere after this meeting, as soon as you can confirm.
Full time.
Okay, we need to look at that. All right. Next up, from the Chief Fiscal Officer, to here consider and act upon the following resolution as requested by the Chief Fiscal Officer. Resolve that the procedures concerning compliance with federal security laws relating to disclosure attached hereto are approved and adopted, and the first selectmen and the Chief Fiscal Officer are authorized and instructed to take appropriate action that is necessary or appropriate to implement such procedures. May I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
A second?
Second.
Mr. Mayor, would you kind of fill us in on what's going on here?
I guess we have a new selectman, since this was before the board last time, so it'll be a little bit more detailed.
I know the SEC. This is the SEC settlement?
Correct.
I'm up to speed on that.
Okay, well, then, so basically then, very brief summary, the town failed to properly report its financials for its bond offerings in 2006, '07, '08, '09, and '10, and so we self-reported to the SEC. We basically, in that self-reporting, to avoid any penalties, we committed to establishing policies and procedures and comply with appropriate disclosure requirements in the future and to cooperate with any subsequent investigations. So we have drafted the procedures, which are for you today, and it's, and we need you to formally approve them, so I can report to the SEC that they've been formally approved.
Okay, any questions from the board?
I just want to make sure, who assisted you in this? So council?
Bond council, yeah.
Bond council? So they've reviewed all this and they're happy with it?
Yes, sir.
Good. What firm do we use for bond council?
Pullman Thomas.
That's it.
Right, is this an annual event?
No.
So is this the first time? We've done this before, why is this coming back? Have we done something similar?
We haven't done this before. What you did before was voted to have the town self-report.
Okay.
Part of that, then, self-reporting, they came back and said, okay, now do the following things. One of the following things is to have written policies and procedures to document what we'd be doing in the future, and these are the written policies and procedures.
Now, this non-compliance, if you will, is reported on our caper going forward?
Not anymore.
It was at one point? So it's done, so we're done in essence disclosing or reporting that on our financial statements?
Well, it's mostly with the state, it's mostly for the bond statements, because we reported on our official statements, we properly reported. A, we didn't properly report, then B, we reported on our official statements that we did properly report, and so that's how the issue comes out.
So at this point, all that is kind of left is that we have written policies going forward to make sure we follow those and handle things going forward appropriately, but we're kind of done with disclosure beyond what we'd normally be required to do?
Correct.
All right, thank you. Any more comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. Ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Self-report.
You want a motion to waive reading? Yes, please. Let me get through the first part, and then if you would chime in. Item seven is the Director of the Solid Waste and Recycling. This requires RTM approval, and this is to here consider and act upon a resolution recommended by the Director of Solid Waste and Recycling.
Motion to waive reading.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
And thank you very much. Mr. Zimbruski, would you care to come up and fill us in on what this says and why it's before the board?
Every three years, we have to go through the resolution to continue to work with Hasway Central, which we've been doing since the early '90s, actually late '80s. It's continued to support the group and pay our bills as we generate, residents generate hazardous waste, just to continue to operate with the group.
Okay. Any questions from the board? This is for the Reef Road?
Yes, that's for New Haven, Hasway Central in New Haven during the summer. It's open every Saturday for our residents and the collection we have here also.
Okay. When you say pay our bills, what are the financial arrangements on this?
Basically, I've got a $67,307 for hazardous waste collection and disposal for our town residents and some of the town public works that we inherit, some illegal dumpings, so...
And so how, who do we pay that money to?
We pay that to the Regional Water Authority, Hasway Central Group.
All right, and that's where we also take those contaminants to deposit them?
Yes. Or they collect them down here in, on Reef Road during our Hasways Collection Day.
Okay. Very good. How many years have we been doing this?
Since early '90s. I think the Health Department, before I became a member of this department in 1990, they were, Health Department was doing it with our effort.
Okay. Any further questions from the board?
Yeah, quick thing. How's attendance at the Reef Road, the annual, still high?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not trailing off?
No, actually, it's getting, it's getting better.
It is?
Yeah.
Okay. Any further questions? Any comments from the public? Back to the board. Anything else? Ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Zimbruski.
Thank you. Do you want the resolution? Or do you have it?
We have, I think we have it in detail here.
Thank you.
All right, next up, item eight, from the Superintendent of Schools, this requires RTM approval. To here consider and act upon the following resolution as requested by the Superintendent of Schools. Resolve that the Town of Fairfield authorizes the Town of Fairfield's Board of Education to comply with the Commissioner of Education and to accept or reject a grant for Tomlinson Middle School partial re-roofing project at Tomlinson Middle School. And further resolve that the Tomlinson Roof Building Committee is hereby established as the building committee with regard to the Tomlinson Middle School partial re-roofing project at Tomlinson Middle School. And further resolve that the Town of Fairfield hereby authorizes at least the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the Tomlinson Middle School partial re-roofing project at Tomlinson Middle School. May I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
A second?
Second.
All right, who's here to discuss? Sal, do you want us? These look like the standard resolutions, but if you could just step us through that so we know what we're doing here.
Hi, Sal Morbeto, Manager of Construction, Security, and Safety for Public Schools. These are called the three standard resolutions. These are required for filing state application for construction reimbursement on this project. And they are standard. Format changed a little bit this year in that they want three resolves instead of resolved, one, two, three, but it's still the same, three items that we're asking for.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board?
This is, roofs are still covered under school reimbursement from the state?
Yes, they are.
Was school reimbursement number, was that changed in the governor's proposed budget this year for the Town of Fairfield?
No, that's set at January 1. The governor doesn't set it. It's set by formula based on three different items, wealth of the town, basically, sets where we are. Our reimbursement rate this year is 25.36% on eligible items.
Is that in any way in jeopardy on the State of Connecticut proposed budget they have right now?
Phil Dewire, Chairman of the Board of Education, we've been in conversation with the Department of Education at the commissioner level and have been told that as long as we submit projects by the June 30 deadline, that any changes that may come as a result of the governor's proposal would be effective with projects that are filed after July 1, July 1 or after. And so I think you can reasonably expect that to be true for this particular project. And if we submit Holland Hill on time, which is probably, do we have any other things beyond that?
No.
So if those two projects get in by June 30, it should be under the current procedures. Sal, unless I've misstated, we are covered for roof reimbursement as long as those roofs have passed their warranty period. If we try a project before the warranty period, then that calls it into question. Is that correct or not?
Yeah, there's a slight adjustment. 20 years is their mark, we get full reimbursement, our full reimbursement. If it's between 15 and 20 years, say it was a poorly performing roof, there's some prorating of the reimbursement rate because of that. And if 15 years or less, we wouldn't get any reimbursement.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from the board?
This is what we approved under Capitol on recurring last?
Yes, it is.
Right? Okay. Anything else?
I'm good.
Any comments from the public? Seeing none, we're back to the board. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next up, the Tomlinson Roof Building Committee. To here consider and approve a charge for the Tomlinson Roof Building Committee. May I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
A second?
Second.
All right, the charge is now before us. See, there we are. It's in your packets. This is similar to the charge we've used on other roof building projects. Sal, I think we've done Dwight and Mill Hill with the same type of charge, and so this is very similar?
No, I'm fine with the charge.
How are we doing on staffing for the SBC? Good? The committee?
As far as I know, in terms of, yes, I did check with the SBC, and that's the next one coming up.
Yeah, so you already ran by them, they're ready for this?
Yes.
Okay.
So any further comments on the charge?
No.
Any comments from the public on the charge? Seeing none, back to the board. Ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Charge is approved. Then item 10 is to here consider and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the first selectman. Resolve that the Special Project Standing Building Committee shall serve as the Tomlinson Roof Building Committee for the purpose of performing roof replacements at Tomlinson Middle School. May I have a motion to accept?
I will make a motion.
A second?
Second.
And just to confirm what you'd asked earlier, I checked with the Chair of the Standing Projects Building Committee, and he said they'd be happy to take this on. They've done some others along this line, so they know what to expect, how it's done. And Sal, the other projects have all moved on a timely basis and kind of without any speed bumps, so to speak.
I have the numbers, just to be clear.
Okay. All right, so any further questions from the board? Any comments from the public? Back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you, Sal. All right, next up, Strategic Plan Committee Charge. The, a work session to create a charge for Strategic Plan Committee, and public comment will be welcome at the appropriate time. General, here's what I was thinking along these lines. I wanted to get some feedback from the board and possibly from the public as to a couple different approaches on this and some different issues. And with your permission, let me run through some thoughts, and then we'd open it up to whatever discussion, additional thoughts or as appropriate. Does that sound okay?
Yes.
All right. So in looking at this, you know, one of the things we've discussed is we had a draft of kind of a multi-phase approach on this, and from my personal standpoint, I kind of liked the phases and how they broke it out, and kind of how it structured developing a plan. That led to a consideration, do we want to have a steering committee of four or five people that really works through all four or five phases? Perhaps would hire the consultant, work with a consultant to finalize a kind of an approach to the plan. And then possibly for each phase, we'd add some people to that, so we'd get some additional folks involved. The steering committee would work, would develop an RFP for the consultant to develop the plan, obviously working with our purchasing department to do that. I'm thinking that because it's a strategic plan, a very dynamic, that we'd have asked for quarterly reports back to the Board of Selectmen. It's not a building project per se, where it's like, go build a project, kind of come back. This is more like one big design phase of a building project, where we'd like to hear back on a regular basis what's taking place. I think the key is stakeholder involvement. We really want this to be a town plan, a community plan, not just something a committee does on their own. So the, looking for a plan that has considerable stakeholder involvement, from interviews to surveys to public hearings, and possibly even some educational sessions to let our community know what a strategic plan is, how they should get involved, what it covers, what it doesn't. Not everybody's done a strategic plan, so everybody may not be aware of that. And also, you know, I'd love to have them take a look at what other towns have done to see what's taking place, so we can learn from what other towns have put in. Also would like to see a component of this that's heavily into social media and has a website, so people can check all the time. It's something that is a dynamic website to keep our citizens and our community updated. As I mentioned, kind of a plan for the plan, and I think there's got to be an education component, either one day or maybe a couple sessions where the consultant, the steering committee takes our community through what they're doing, how they're going to do it, and where they're looking for community involvement. And again, as we've talked before, I was thinking steering committee of five people, you know, and not that that number's golden, just not too big and not too small. We talked about reporting to the Board of Selectmen both on the plan approach and the RFP before it goes out and they hire a consultant, so we can see what the approach is or what their thoughts are prior to hiring the consultant and the RFP and getting that back. And then ask them to review the draft of how to create a strategic plan for Fairfield, because I think there's some good work in there. At least from my personal standpoint, I like some of the thoughts that were included in that. So that's kind of what I've been thinking about so far, and wanted to make sure that we're all in agreement before we draft up a charge that kind of says that. So first question is kind of, kind of overall steering committee, or do something by phases or a combination? Any thoughts?
I like the idea of a five-member steering committee. You know, if we are torn between five or six, or, you know, we get really good people. But I would say five to start off with is a nice number. My other thought is, I've been involved in a couple other town strategic plans prior when I was working for Governor Rel at the time. One of the towns I was involved in their strategic plan, they started off, they kicked off the process with a large community meeting, and they had either the first lockman or the person in charge, in one case it was economic development, in the other case it was a mayor, basically identify what the goal is, and thanked everybody for coming out, and they sort of put together a large, you know, planning session where everybody threw ideas up on a board. If we were to put a strategic plan together and then move on to basically kick it off with community involvement, I think it sets a really nice tone, that that's our mission to engage as many people as we can, and then start, start moving from that point.
You know, that's a good thought. We did, and we've done some work sessions with other planning groups, and perhaps kicking off a session like that, having some groups where we break down and having the breakdown organized into different groups, where each group might come up with what they envision and what questions they're looking for answered in the strategic plan, so we kind of help get that all focused on that.
One of them I went to was really well organized, so I'm happy to work offline on sort of brainstorming that.
That would be good. That'd be good. Mr. Bateson, your thoughts?
Yeah, I'm good with the five people. The only thing I heard you mention, I just want to clarify, the steering committee, does that stay in place and we add people around that, or do we disband the steering committee, and when we go to stage two, we bring in new people? I thought you said we build upon the steering committee. Is that what you envisioned?
Yeah, and looking at this with multiple phases, what I'm worried about is losing institutional knowledge as we go from phase to phase with what we've done and what public sessions we've held and what stakeholders we've talked to. So I think there's got to be some core group that survives the entire plan.
So that's going to be those five people?
That's my thought. Working with a consultant, so those five people plus the consultant kind of drive the process. And then for each phase, if we want to bring in other stakeholders or other key folks, we get them involved. So we can have the, kind of a mix of different people involved at different stages, so we get some turnover and some new ideas and thoughts, but, and we don't overwork those five people. Okay? So, but I haven't seen this done at a town level before. Where I've seen this done is in private organizations, be they private sector or not-for-profit, and you do it in a fairly confined time period, but, you know, you kind of own everybody because they work for you. So it's a little bit easier to do, and it's part of their day job. This is a little bit different with volunteers coming in, and I think that we want to make sure as we go from phase to phase that we, what we learn in phase two, we don't forget in phase three because they're only people.
So when we, when we start thinking about the people, the choices for the steering committee, we're going to have to make sure that they're qualified to go through stage two, three, four, and five. And that they have the desire to do so.
Yes. And we've got, the thought would be that coming out of today, we'd actually get some ads out in the media asking for volunteers. We'd get the resumes back and share those with our committee, and then from that, we would pick.
I'd like to move along to that point. We start picking people and get this in motion. I think it's sort of been chilling out for about a year now, so...
Yes, it has.
It's time to get it out of the relaxed state and move it into the action state.
I think we're all in favor of that, no question. Anything else from the board? Is it okay to go to some public comment perhaps?
I'm good.
Any comment from the public?
Clarification purposes, reminder purposes. Again, Phil Dewire, Chairman of the Board of Education.
We adopted what we consider our strategic plan, but we call it a district improvement plan, which is a five-year plan. We're in the second year of that plan. We anticipate with the new superintendent that we've given her the option of taking a look at it to see if she wishes to make any changes in it, a new fresh set of eyes. When you go to a public setting for a town strategic plan, I suspect you will get people coming up to make suggestions about our school system. And so you might want to clarify that this is a town plan, not a school district plan, unless you wanted to include a component in it that discussed the school district. But I think our board would want to reserve any changes in our district improvement plan to be voted on by the Board of Education at the suggestion. I'm just bringing this up because I have no doubt that, you know, no matter how you advertise, members of the public will come up and perhaps steer you in one direction or another, and the committee chair ought to be clear as to what the goal is. That's my only purpose for commenting.
Mr. Bateson?
Yeah, I didn't think of that. It's good that you brought it up, though, because I just assumed that there would be no overlap there. Because I don't think there would be anything we could do to tell you guys what to do, right?
Yeah, my purpose of saying is...
Right, is that?
To, one, remind you that we have one, and, two, to remind you that you can never tell where the public will want to go, and that you ought to be clear up front so that answers can be given clearly.
Okay. Yes, as I looked at that, we have a number of departments, certainly the Board of Ed being the most obvious.
Yeah.
A number of departments that have done some planning on their own. Economic Development's done some, Police and Fire have some, the library has their plan. And the idea is not to take it down to that level, we're worried about restructuring the library or deciding which math books that the Board of Ed's going to go, or what emphasis they should have on curriculum. But there may be discussions at the Board of Ed in terms of what it needs to do, or suggestions on what it needs to do, that we would develop for purposes of handing to the Board of Ed for their consideration. I could see that from a higher-level standpoint, but not...
I could see us handing something off.
Yeah. And the same with, this certainly doesn't have the power or authority to enforce a change at any department level. The idea is to make this planning document that we can all use and work to.
That's what I was under.
And let's take, Economic Development, they've just done a longer, longer line of plan. This might come back to that and say, hey, there's some other industries, or some other this, or there, here's what's happening in other areas, or you need to look at some more of this. But it's not to go down and actually do that work instead of the Economic Development Commission.
Thank you.
Mr. Dewire, thank you. If that, does that make sense to you all?
No, it does.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, I get it.
Yeah, and I think as long as they're reporting back to us on a quarterly basis and we can talk, we should be involved in those discussions enough to help guide them if we start to get off the rails a little bit.
Yes.
Any further comments from the public? All right, back here, I would point out, just, we've had, initially there was a concern, I guess a couple months ago, when we didn't have public comment, for the last two Board of Selectment meetings, we'd had public comment or offered the opportunity for public comment. We haven't, so I just, in case anybody brings that up, it's not our norm, but we thought because this was a strategic plan document, we should take that, so...
So the next time I see something on the agenda, I'm expecting a charge now?
Correct.
Good. So we're plasma, asking for input on that. We're going to go to the charge next.
Yep, so we'll do that. We'll vote on the charge next. We'll get ads out in the media immediately to get people volunteering, and the goal is now, full speed ahead, pick the committee, pick the steering committee, and let's get rolling.
And you wouldn't envision that would not be on one agenda? You would have the charge, and then the next agenda, we would have, hopefully, a group of people to look at.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right.
So you're not two birds...
It's going to take, it's going to, we're going to allow a few weeks for people to get their, the word to get out, people to get their...
So we do the charge, then solicit?
So let's say there's 20 resumes we get back. It may take us a little while to review those to pick the folks.
Yep.
All right, so I'd expect if I pick some timing, it might be...
After vote.
Second meet in April or first meeting in May, that we're picking people for the committee. Should be the next meeting when we're deciding on the charge.
Okay.
I'm good.
Sound okay?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you all. Next meeting, the Town Attorney. This item is here, the Town Attorney is in Florida on family, dealing with a family The Town Attorney is in Florida on family, dealing with a family matter and won't be back till tomorrow.
Also, I would propose on this, we would take no action considering it's before the courts now.
Okay, that's fine. I just, it had to be here because-
No, I know. We had that discussion with Kathleen because when she asked for input on the agenda, I had said that. And she said, we're going to leave it on. So I don't know, if you just want to take no action because it's going through that process now, I'm fine with that.
Okay. And then moving on to item 13, a tax collector to consider an act upon. Tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector and the amount recommended may have a motion to accept.
Make a motion.
A second?
Second.
Thank you. That item is now before us. Any amendments?
I do. I have an amendment. I'd like to change the amount to $38,809.58, followed by a period.
Very good. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right. The item as amended is now before us. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Okay. So that's done. Next up, to hear, consider and act upon any other business which will properly come before this meeting.
I have something.
Okay.
We, back on February 21st, the Board of Selectmen held a special meeting. And I'd like to have those minutes, I'd like to make a motion to have the minutes added to today's agenda for a vote.
I'll second that. Yeah, here's, as we've talked, I think briefly offline, but let me offer some thoughts. One, I'm not sure that was a valid Board of Selectment meeting since it wasn't called by the Chair and in this case, myself. And according to the Charter, the First Selectmen shall preside over all Board of Selectment meetings. So I'm not sure it is proper to have a motion to kind of have that into, add that into the minutes. But what I would suggest perhaps is an action item. If, since we run our meetings by Robert's Rules, if you would go take a look at Robert's Rules and see if we can find a rationale, I'll do the same and see what we can do to educate ourselves to see whether that would be an appropriate motion for this board or not.
So I did. I checked Robert's Rules. And since we had a special meeting, we are to basically acknowledge the meeting which was held. We looked at the Charter as well. I sent out two requests to you, asking you to schedule a meeting. Both requests were, I want to say turned down.
Correct.
We, as the majority members of the Board of Selectmen, felt it was necessary because the Charter outlines the rationale for us going there. We had a legal matter which we were being issued. We received a subpoena after our previous Board of Selectment meeting, which was on a Wednesday. We were, served papers on a Thursday, and I asked you on a Friday to have that special meeting because the Charter very clearly says the Board of Selectmen shall engage in all litigation of which there is. So here, the board was named to this case and we felt it was appropriate to have a meeting so we could go ahead and properly plan for the meeting, which the court date was held prior to the next scheduled Board of Selectment meeting. So that is the reason why we held the meeting. I did have it properly posted throughout town. It was posted on three different locations in Town Hall. The meeting agenda was clocked in or stamped in with the Town Clerk's office. And I also sent a copy of the request for the meeting and a copy of the agenda to the Freedom of Information Office in Hartford. So they too were aware of it. And you yourself were issued an agenda prior to the time ahead. So all I'm doing is I'm trying to follow the Robert's Rules and have the meeting minutes accepted today.
Yeah. I think just in response from the top, one, the only person who can call a Board of Select meeting is the Chair and that's me. I did not call that. Second, it wasn't noticed properly the way we notice all of our public meetings. And it has to be noticed from the Board of Selectment Office and the First Selectmen's Office, and that didn't take place. Third, it, the Charter clearly says two things. One, that the First Selectmen is Chair of the Board of Selectmen. And second, that the First Selectmen shall preside over all Board of Selectment meetings. That makes that meeting both improperly called, the Board of Selectmen is not authorized to call a meeting. It makes it improperly noticed because it didn't follow procedures. Makes it improperly run because I wasn't there. And the item on the agenda is not within the charge scope or authorization of the Board of Selectmen. It is the First Selectmen who selects the Town Attorney. So the motion that was passed there is not valid. So for all those reasons, I'm willing to review what you have in Robert's Rules, but according to the Charter, that's not a proper meeting. So posting minutes from a non-Board of Selectment meeting on, as part of the Board of Selectmen minutes, I'm having difficulty getting there. So I'm trying to give you kind of an out to say, show me where it says that in Robert's Rules so we can review that. Happy to take a look at that, but right now I don't see how that works.
I did not bring the Robert's Rules language with me today.
Okay, so we can, we can take it up at the next meeting. I mean, we took it up here.
How would that work?
Same way it did here. The difference would be we'd have a chance to review the Robert's Rules before that to see what applies and what doesn't. As I understand it in Robert's Rules, it's only the Chair that can call a special meeting. I did not call that meeting. That was not an official meeting. It didn't follow Robert's Rules. It wasn't properly noticed. And the item on the agenda wasn't within the authority of the Board of Selectmen. So it was an invalid resolution on the agenda.
So under that, that avenue, how would we fulfill the Charter requirement for the Board of Selectmen to prosecute or defend, appeal from, or defend appeals from and make settlements of litigation and claims as the Board of Selectmen direct when it comes to legal counsel? Here, we are named, we were named and served with papers and yet you, I don't understand how you would object to having a meeting called on that principle. I mean, you were part of the board being served. How do we not, how do you, how do you not want to address that is my, is my concern?
It's not a Board of Selectment item. We address it very simply. We address it like we do every other lawsuit that comes before the town. The Town Attorney, as selected by the First Selectmen, and that is in the Charter, would meet, and tried to meet with folks individually, tried to call you and you would not return his calls.
I never could call him, Mike.
It was my understanding you were, but I will confirm that.
And if that, if this is the timing you want to have this conversation, I would, I would love to do that.
Just, let me finish, Mr. Timmyak. Here's the deal. In the Charter, the First Selectmen picks the Town Attorney. That's it. The Board of Selectmen is not involved in that selection process. What you did was not within the Charter and was beyond the scope of the Board of Selectmen.
I don't, I don't see us as picking a Town Attorney. I see us as-
That was, that was your resolution.
I see us as referring a matter that involved the board to outside counsel.
Yeah, that you don't, that's not within the, that's not a duty or power of the Board of Selectmen. That is the First Selectmen.
My interpretation of the Charter says the Board of Selectmen has that, has that authority. I can't, you're right.
Your interpretation-
I agree with you that I can't replace Stanton lessor. I can't. But if there's a pending legal matter, I can refer that to outside counsel.
No, you can't.
I disagree.
All right. That's, the Charter clearly says that the First Selectmen selects the Town Attorney and any assistant Town Attorneys. And that's the way this town has worked for 40 or 50 years. The action you tried to take has never been valid and never been legal. All right? However, the item before us is whether you want to get something in the minutes. I'm giving you the opportunity to go to Robert's Rules, pick it out, send it to me. Let me review it and see whether we can get that in.
I think you've already made your position pretty clear. I think when, when we tried to call the meeting, you, you know, you were an unwilling, I'll call you an unwilling Chair. I don't see that as then shutting down the process. I think that the board should still have a right to meet.
It, if you can find that in the Charter, I'm happy to review it, but it doesn't.
I don't, I don't think it would be in Charter. I just think that-
If you can find that in Robert's Rules.
That's it.
Those are the two, those are the two documents that govern our board. And I'm happy to review either one.
So what do you want to do, Chris? We have a first and a second.
Well, I find it, I find it very ironic that here, you're relying on the Charter and this whole issue is based upon what the Charter says and the fact that there's no need for a special election. So I find that ironic.
Chris, the item before us is whether we're putting something in the minutes. All right? And I'd ask you to come, we could go on for hours. We're going to, I believe, let the judge decide that.
Good, yes.
And whatever the judge does. So we already know we have that disagreement. Let's focus on the administrative matter here of you trying to get something into the minutes. And I'm saying it's not appropriate, but I'm also saying if you can show me where in Robert's Rules it allows for that or in the Charter it allows for that, I'm happy to reconsider.
I'll tell you the truth, Chris. The way I'd like to proceed tonight, we have a first and a second. I'd like to see it get proved wrong, for us to approve it and then have it proved wrong.
Okay.
I'd feel more comfortable with that. I just feel comfortable that the process we took was correct.
I don't see any basis for that. And as Chair, if we're going to do something at this meeting, you have got to show me some basis for proceeding on that, along those lines.
Right now, it's before the board to get added to the agenda. Right? The minutes?
It's to be accepted, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm saying-
To be added to the agenda. We're voting to add something to the agenda. We're not voting on the minutes yet. So.
Yeah, and I'm saying that's not proper at this point because it's not something that, that should come before. So if you want to find a rationalization that in either, or justification rather, in either the Charter or Robert's Rules for doing that, you can do that. But other than that-
I think the majority of the board asking for a meeting and-
The majority of the board doesn't have the power or authority to ask for a meeting. That's not given to the board at any point in those documents. And that's how we run our board. That's how we run our town.
Hypothetical, if you died, what do we do?
Mr. Timmyak would be authorized to take over as First Selectman.
That's because of that letter?
Yes.
Okay. So then that's where that power goes?
But I'm not planning on doing that at any time.
I didn't want to. It wasn't a suggestion. I, Chris, I think we should just move forward with adding it to the agenda and get proven wrong. That's me. If, but I mean, if you feel differently, if you want to take a chance and, you know, take the opportunity to look at Robert's Rules and see what it is, I just, for me, I think the majority of the board, there was extenuating circumstances that we were working around.
You don't, extenuating, you still have to have the-
You were an unwilling Chair and I, I'm sure this has happened elsewhere. What do you do?
You have to follow the rules, Ed. You can't just make up the rules because you don't like it.
I, we weren't making up rules. We were playing with what I saw. We were trying to address our concerns in a litigation matter where we had divergent interests. And your interests, sitting in the Chair, were, you know, a little bit more representative. And, you know, we had to work around that.
There are two things. If you're not making up the rules, show me where it's written. If anything else, the, the issue was calling a meeting, which you're not authorized to do, having a resolution on there that isn't within the authority of the Board of Selectmen, it rests with the First Selectmen. Those two things make it, for lack of a better term, illegal. However, if you can find something and you're saying you have rules, if you're saying there's Robert's Rules or the Charter, those are the two documents that govern us. We have to work by the rules. We don't just make stuff up because we don't like what it says or we can't do what we want.
So, I mean, we called the special meeting because we found reason in the Charter that we felt, since we were served with papers as the Board of Selectmen, that we should have a discussion and we should be able to have a say in who should be our Town, who should represent us in this matter. In the minutes, I cite Article 4 and Article 5 of Charter provision 9.3c, which is-
Do you have a full Charter here?
I don't. I have this, I have this section, which was part of the minutes. So it says, "Upon the direction of the Board of Selectmen, appear for the town or any of its officers, boards, commissions, or authorities in any litigation or any other action brought by or against the town or any town officials." That would be Ed and I and the entire board. And then number five, it says, "Prosecute or defend, appeal from, or defend appeals from, and make any settlements of litigation and claims as the Board of Selectmen direct." So our view was that that, that section of the Charter needed to be satisfied via a special meeting where we have an open discussion about who directs and how we have our interests represented, the board's interests represented, heading into court. And you'll agree that the court date and us getting served with papers, we did not have any meeting scheduled to address that section of the Charter.
Yeah, I'm saying, and I'm also saying that, that the way that is normally handled and the way we handle it for years is the fact that Town Attorney would, would meet with the individual folks and talk about that. And it's my understanding the Town Attorney reached out to you and those calls weren't returned.
That's, that's not an accurate statement.
Either way, the First Selectmen is the person who selects that. And if you reached out to me, asked me who the Town Attorney was and who'd be handling this, that would be fine. There's no reason to schedule a Board of Selectmen, and you can't schedule it without the Chair and without the First Selectmen presiding over it. So it wasn't a valid meeting.
I, Chris, I, Mike, I don't think we're going to agree.
Yeah.
Or not. Even if we go back and look at this, I just, you know, we're just not going to agree. So I'd just like to agree to disagree and proceed.
Yeah, I would, I think I'll go with what Ed said. Let's, we'll adopt it today and then if we're given information which needs to be overridden, we'll look at that under those circumstances.
Yeah, that's, that's not the way it works, guys. You've got to have a valid reason for doing it. You don't have a valid reason for undoing it later.
So you're telling me I can't add something to the agenda?
I'm telling you, you can't add this to the agenda because it's not a proper act.
I disagree.
Yeah. I don't see how-
There's a, there's a motion before the board to amend the agenda. That's all I see.
I don't see it as a valid motion.
Yeah, okay, so I challenge that ruling to the board. I appeal that ruling to the board. You're saying it's improper? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, I'm saying it's not Board of Selectmen business.
Okay, I'm, I'm appealing your ruling to the board.
Okay.
So I think it is a proper amendment.
I'll second that.
Motion.
I'll second that.
It is. All those in favor of the appeal?
I don't think you're allowed to call for the vote, Ed. I think that goes to the Chair and I'm not going to call for it on an invalid motion.
Then that's why I took the liberty.
Yeah, you're not, you're not allowed to do that. You do not have that authority.
Well, I do.
No, you don't.
Mike, you can't rule the meeting.
That's what the Chair does, Ed.
No, there's an amendment on the floor, Mike.
Yeah, and it's, it's not, it didn't properly come-
There's an amendment to add something to the agenda.
It didn't properly come before the floor.
And you're saying it's out of order.
I am.
You just appealed it to the board. And the board voted and said it is proper.
Actually, it didn't. I didn't call for the vote yet.
Any suggestions?
I, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm going to suggest, if that's the case, show me something in Robert's Rules If that's the case, and show me something in Robert's Rules that gets us through this, guys. I'll be happy to read that, listen to it, and follow it.
No, I really, I really think that what we've done, we're never going to agree on this.
I'm not, I'm talking about process, Ed. I'm not talking about-
And I just, yeah, I, what I think we just did, we just appealed your ruling. I see that as it. I think it's before the board now. That's what I think.
Okay, we'll give you that one.
Are you going to go to the public?
Not yet.
That I don't know. It's an amendment. So now we have, now the amendment to add it to the agenda, the motion to add it to the agenda is before the board.
Mr. Bateson, if you will wait until I recognize you to take control of this meeting, I would appreciate that. That is not your role. That is the first selectman's job as chair of this board.
I got you.
So let's be clear on that.
I got you.
That is clear in the Charter. And I'll be happy to stop the meeting, get the Charter, and show you that.
All right. I'm good.
All right. Any further comments here before we go to the public?
What are we going to the public on?
Comments?
Comments.
On the agenda, on the motion?
On the item, motion to add to the agenda that you just made.
Okay.
Any comments from the public?
Phil Dwyer, citizen. Two other parts of Robert's Rule that you may want to connect with before, either before you make the decision, that in my role, I've happened to read through Robert's Rules quite frequently. One is that Robert's Rules does make a statement that any action that runs contrary to law or Charter, bylaws, et cetera, is an illegal motion, and if adopted, would be considered of null and void. So you may want to read the Robert's Rules section about that type of action, as to whether this is valid legally before the Board of Selectmen. The second is, you may want to read the minutes portion of Robert's Rules, because I don't, the minutes portion say you record the actions that you took at that meeting, not record the actions that took place at another meeting, and just slip them into this meeting. And so you may want to clarify whether what you're attempting to do from the minutes side is correct as well.
Can you repeat that, the second one?
Robert's Rules say the minutes of a meeting should record the action at that meeting.
Yes.
And so if you took action at another meeting, and you're attempting by adding them to this meeting to more or less validate that prior action, since it didn't take place at this meeting, that would not be properly put before the minutes of this meeting. So you may want to just clarify that portion as well.
Mr. Dwyer, thank you. Any further comments from the public?
I've been to many meetings over the years, and in some of the meetings I've been to have been instructions on F O I. The item you're discussing is improper, improperly before you, because the meeting was not properly noticed. So there couldn't be no minutes at an improperly noticed meeting. There could be no action taken. So I don't understand why you need minutes for a meeting that was not held.
Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, the item is back before the board.
I still feel confident that it was a properly called meeting. And we did the best we could, going to Hartford with F O I. So I hear Mrs. Ewing concerned, considering Mr. Dwyer's concerns. I feel confident that, to point one, that what the actions we took at that meeting were not contrary to Charter. And I, there's nothing here that is actionable as it relates, there's nothing, what we, we took action at the 21st meeting, so there's no, the only follow-up action is the approval of the minutes. So I don't see that as being applicable, so I, I'm still good.
All right. Mr. Timniak, do you have any thoughts?
So, you know, I do have thoughts. I appreciate the two comments from the public. In regards to the minutes, the minutes are from the meeting as taken, so they were stamped in or clocked in with the town clerk within a 24-hour period, as relates, I think, Mr. Tuchel, you do raise a point about having clarification on, on Robert's Rules.